Thank you, Rob. I'll call our committee to the whole meeting this morning to order. Is there any declaration of interest related to any item on this agenda? Not seeing one. You can declare it at any time. Uh, is there any business arising from minutes? Well, I guess we didn't have any. Delegations. We have Peter Fries. He's uh with M T E Voxter Assessment. He's gonna talk about tax policy. I know we uh all are looking forward to that. So uh, Peter? He's online. There he is.
I I am.
Sorry, I'm looking at where's Peter? Here he is right here in front of me.
I'm gonna bore you with tax policy from afar this morning, so.
That was not what I was insinuating. The floor is yours, sir. Where you go?
I'm gonna share my screen as long as that works. Alright, so uh, thank you, uh, Warden and Council. I'm going to uh talk about property tax policy this morning and the county's current property tax circumstances. Uh, we will. Make sure that's. We will uh, we're gonna go over some concepts about Ontario's property tax system, just as a bit of a refresher. Uh, we went into this extensively last year. It's gonna be much, much shorter and I'll, I'll go through it fairly uh efficiently um to get on to the, the county's actual tax uh circumstances, landscape, how things have changed from last year. So uh, understanding assessment change, how that turns into tax change, uh, tax policy options and, and, and we'll talk a little bit about municipal levy change mainly in a conceptual manner. Uh, just an important note, this uh, this is a background. There's no staff report attached to this, so these aren't, although we're looking at actual numbers and figures, um, it's not attached to an actual decision. It is a, a background document, so I just want to clarify that. As noted, we're gonna start just with a quick, uh, what are we talking about property tax? How does it work? And there, there could be a lot of uh misconceptions around this, how it works, why people pay what they pay or why people should pay what they pay. But in Ontario, and I think um, this is a pretty simple concept. Everybody's property tax is calculated when it comes to, you know, printing your bill. Applying a tax rate against the property's assessed value. Um, property assessments or the estimated value of your property is based on an estimate of market value and we're currently using market values for January first, twenty sixteen market value asset, so they're quite old. Um, and, and right now we're in a reassessment pause. We're gonna talk a little bit about what that means. Each property is also assigned a property class that allows us to distribute the taxes in a couple of different ways. So primarily, um, before we get to the individual tax liabilities, it's important to understand that we use the assessment base as a manner of distributing the tax. So your assessment, we're not taxing it in the same way that a um, you're taxing a transaction at a store. It's your share, so it's your share of the assessment base really turns into your share of the tax. And as I mentioned, in Ontario, what we have is we are distributing it a couple of different ways. We are using value to distribute the tax, but we augment that a bit by tax classification. We use different classes. Um, and this is where we get into uh manipulating that balance of taxation. We can tax currently business taxes a little higher than we tax a dollar of residential assessment. We tax farm a little less and, and things like that. And those actual ratios we use, which are in this, this is just a hypothetical example and illustration right here, we're using those, that's part of county council's decision. You decide where you're gonna set those ratios, where those relationships are gonna be. So that'll be the core of what, one of the things we'll be discussing when we get to your actual um material. Uh, you can also adjust the balance of taxation through a number of different ways. There's tax ratios. You must make that decision every year. That is a county by law that comes forward. Um, and you have to decide what ratios you're using, even if you're using last year's, you have to make that decision. Same thing with discounts. Discounts are how we treat certain uh underutilized property or uh unimproved land. And we have a couple other tools that you would only use under certain circumstances if it called for it. So um, your main decisions in terms of balance of taxation, not how much you raise, but how it's gonna be shared have to do with ratios. And that, those decisions are made within the context of, of the annual tax discussion. And the county and local area municipalities have to make a number of decisions before tax bills can go in the mail and that revenue can be raised that you need. You need to set your levies, how much you're gonna raise via the property tax. So how much do you need your taxpayers to contribute through the property tax? Those decisions are made as part of your budget. Um, you know, integral to your spending decisions and all those types of things. The county must set tax ratios subclass treatment because again, we're gonna, we're, those are gonna affect how the tax rates relate to each other, the balance of taxation, um, you know, for farm and managed forests and multi-residential and things like that. We can adjust those. For Gray County, and we'll show you how this works a bit, uh, there's another nuance. The city of Owen Sound sets its own ratios as a local area municipality. This is a unique situation for Owen Sound. Um, doesn't apply anywhere else in the province. It's, it's just unique to Gray County in Owen Sound, and we'll see how, how that works. It makes things a little more complicated, uh, but over time, those ratios have, have, have moved together. Uh, and really, as I said, even if you're using last year's parameters, there is no status quo. The tax base is changing, kind of the ground's changing underneath your feet. So even last year's decisions make a little bit different outcome this year, because that basis changed. We always have to understand what's happening. Revisit these questions, revisit this discussion um every year. And because we are taxing, you're making decisions about the tax policy, the tax levy, how much you're gonna raise, how it's gonna be distributed. You're applying those decisions to your assessment base, which is the valuation and classification of all your properties. So when we're making um decisions and considering tax change, how property taxes are changing for individual taxpayers, um, how much we're raising as a, as a municipality, uh, how much more we're raising and why did it change from last year? Who's paying the increase or the decrease, things like that? We have to look at each variable within the system separately and we're gonna, we can quantify how they affect things. Um, and there's, there's four main categories. We have reassessment, can affect the balance of taxation. That's not happening right now, but it's important to know what that means because it's important to know what's not happening um or what we're, we're, we're sort of missing out on and make sure that we understand what is happening. We have growth. Growth is exactly what it sounds like. That is an expansion of your taxing capacity. You have new base, new properties. Um, generally, that's not new geography. It is just new taxable improvements within the municipality. And then there's your tax policy, which we kind of refer to within this context uh as, as those questions or those decisions that affect the distribution of tax, mainly tax ratios. And then there's levy change. Levy change is additional revenue that comes from an increase. You, you decide that you're gonna increase. We've measured our growth. We know what the tax base was carrying at the end of last year. How much do we want to increase? So we're gonna look at these separately and we'll, we'll talk about why it's so important as we go along and, and look at the actual numbers. In terms of those background or, or foundational uh landscape issues, we have that assessment base changing underneath our feet. And it's really important, um, uh, when we're, we're looking at this, we're considering change to make sure we understand the difference between growth particularly and valuation change or reassessment. Um, even in an era or actually particularly an era where we're not facing reassessment change. Uh, one of the big questions might get quite often is, and, and uh is, well, we don't have reassessment. Are we missing out on growth? Are we missing out on revenues that hampering us? The lack of reassessment is doing a lot of things and having a lot of negative consequences, but not, um, there's no impact on growth. Because when we reassess, we take the exact same properties in two different markets and we just refresh that estimate of value. So in this case, this home was estimated at one hundred thousand, January first, twenty twelve, when we flipped or updated to the, the current reassessment cycle. Empac went back to that house and said, well, we think it's now worth a hundred and forty. So that hundred and forty represents that home's share. Um, very different than growth. It doesn't create. It changes everybody's share, but it doesn't, doesn't create any more money for the municipality, any more revenue. It doesn't change your base. What we're really doing at the class level or the property level is we are changing the shares. And um, you know, I'm intentionally going through this fairly, fairly efficiently, but if there's questions, um, we're really just changing shares. How does a share change? Um, so when we look at this and we see that we had reassessment change or CVA change uh right here on this line ranging from eighteen to eight to sixteen percent overall. It wasn't, it's not on a class by class basis, which this example is. It is not that rate of change. It is not that reassessment change that drives our tax change. It is the relative rate or the change in shares. So in this example, base goes up sixteen point two nine percent overall. There's no tax change. Um, the residential goes up eighteen percent. The taxes, corresponding taxes go up one point four seven percent. So everything's muted. Um, one of the important things about this concept, keep in mind in a period where we don't have reassessment as counselors uh and, and, and staff is when the taxpayer says, wow, you know, my house is assessed at a hundred and forty thousand. My neighbor just sold for two hundred and eighty. Are my taxes gonna double? The answer is no. So that, that's important to keep in mind. How do we do this? Well, when there's a reassessment, we have to, we have to change the tax rates and we, we bring them down, so we're not raising any more money overall. We're keeping things revenue neutral because there's no new taxpayer, so we can't raise more money because of reassessment. And, and each, each person or each class's individual impact is gonna be based on their relationship to overall change. So that taxpayer who just asked you the question, I think my assessment's gonna go from one forty to two eighty. It's gonna go up a hundred percent. Well, if the overall change was eighty percent across the municipality, they're gonna see a reassessment related tax shift. If the overall is a hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty, they're actually gonna see I know, a, a, a reassessment related tax decrease. Their taxes will actually go down because they're changing below the prevailing rate. Um, so in, in this little very simple example, these properties, the overall seventeen, these properties that are changing by fourteen, twelve and nine are actually gonna go down in tax. These ones at twenty-two, twenty-four. Um, you know, there's, there's a whole, there's, there's a whole bunch of math behind this. But the important part is that reassessment, when it comes, even if it's huge, it's gonna be about how shares change, not how the CVA changes. So, you know, if we see um, you know, last reassessment, I think in Gray County, you're very familiar, farms went up on a percentage basis more than residential. So farm tax, there was a shift onto farms. If residential goes up more than farms, then there'll be a shift back onto residential in the next reassessment. Though, those are the kind of, you know, things that will happen. It's all about relative change. Um, so, you know, we are uh, I'll just, that's kind of a background slide in case somebody's reviewing this. Uh, so if reassessment, just to clarify, if reassessment is gonna bring us more dollars and it used to bring us more dollars, are we missing out? No, because reassessment is so, it's very different from growth. Growth is where we're adding properties and, and the bottom here, you see, we're taking a, a, you know, vacant lot and building four houses or twenty houses or two thousand houses. That's growth. That's new taxpayers, no, but new buildings. And, and we measure that on an ongoing basis um in real time. When we add this house in here, it wasn't there last January first. It's there now. Um, it came on the, it came online during twenty twenty-three. Empac is gonna assess its value. They are gonna, they are gonna go back and estimate its twenty sixteen value. It's not gonna come on. I know the homes have gone way up. But just because this was built or was assessed in twenty twenty-three doesn't mean we're gonna assess it at two eighty. We're still gonna go back and say, hey, the house next door is virtually the same. Um, this one's ten years newer, but it's virtually the same. If this existed in twenty sixteen, it would have been a hundred and forty thousand dollars, so um one, one of the, that's, you know, theoretically, that's what we're, we're still trying to do as we get further and further away from the valuation data gets, gets a little bit um uh more difficult. But when this growth comes on, there's a couple of super important things to keep in mind, and this is your actual twenty twenty-three growth. So, and again, the positive reassessment didn't stop growth. This is how, on a class by class basis, your base, assessment base grew during the year, um, during twenty twenty-three. So compared to the roll return, um, when we talked last year and set last year's rates compared to December thirty-first. Now, this four hundred and eighty-three or almost four hundred and eighty-four million dollars in new CVA is provided by new taxpayers or taxpayers that improved their property. So I had a vacant lot to build a house. I had a garage to my house, you know, something like that. This is, this doesn't come, you know, doesn't affect the base as a whole. Um, and there is corresponding new revenue. This is revenue uh related to assessment that was not on the roll when you set your tax rates last year. So when we apply those tax rates, it generated brand new revenue from new taxpayers. And again, we're not adding land, but if I had a vacant lot and I build a house, you, we calculated the rate last year and you set your budget and your levy. It was based on the idea that I had a vacant lot assessed at fifty thousand dollars. Now I have a home assessed at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that additional hundred thousand dollars in CVA translates into additional tax revenue for the upper tier that the county and the local area municipality that property falls within. Um, this is the breakout of how the revenue changed during the year. So in upper tier county levy, your base um was producing one point seven to, one point seven million dollars more than when you set your rates last year. That came online during the year. So this is new money from new taxpayers. Um, and uh, there was growth, obviously, in uh county levy. There's growth in the, in the municipal levies, the local municipal levies. It's really important to make sure that we look at this separate from other things that we do this year-end growth calculation um before we start looking at twenty twenty-four. And I'll just uh take one of the higher numbers here. For example, we got Southgate. Southgate, four point six percent growth in county levy last year. Now, let's say the county at this year then had a, you know, two percent levy increase. Well, if we looked at last year's county by law and this year's county by law, we would say, oh, the taxpayers of Southgate are paying six point six percent more than they were last year. That's not actually the case, and we'll look at some real calculations later about how that, that is carried. But this four point six is carried by those new taxpayers. You know, the people that were there last year, their homes existed, families, whoever it is, the businesses that were, were in Southgate this time last year did not contribute to that four point six percent at all. They didn't pay a dime of that hundred and ninety-six thousand. Only people that built new pro, new, new, new buildings, businesses, homes, things like that. And that is, you know, that's, that's, that's more important, that concept more important when we're talking in a two-tiered, that we're looking at our local growth or our um, uh, in a single tier because of what we're carrying and what our taxpayers are carrying, how changes are affecting our actual taxpayers and their bills. When we look at the comparison of growth year over year, uh, the percentage is similar. It is up a bit. Um, last year, the percentage was two point four four. This year is two point five two. Because the base, we started with more to start with that percentage, the dollars are up, um, you know, uh, over a million dollars, uh, so sorry, over a hundred thousand dollars more in growth this year than last year. So, you know, growth is, is fairly stable. It's gonna move around from municipality to municipality. Um, you bring on a new, you know, uh, pick on Southgate again. Lots of growth last year, probably had a bunch of stuff coming online. And then it's, you know, that growth is there and it becomes part of the base. So we always go to the end of the year. Make sure we know that year-end position. That year-end position is critical when you're making decisions, particularly at the county level to understand. That's what everything would look like if you said, we don't wanna change a thing. We want everything exactly like it was on December thirty-first. Then everybody's county bill would virtually be the same. No more money, no change in, in, in tax shifts. That's where we're gonna measure things like your levy increase from. Um, we do have to change notional, we have to restate rates every year uh for your local area municipalities, your local levies. Well, um, you still go through the restatement exercise, but in era of non, no reassessment, they're gonna come out to equal last year's rates. The county rates, there's a very tiny little change in them because of the uh unique Owen Sound circumstances and restating. We have to take the county's year-end position. Um, which we just showed here on a class by class and then that Owen Sound requisition, uh, which we'll explain in a moment. Uh, and we have to take that sixty-nine, six forty-five, three twenty-four that was raised at year end by the county rates for upper tier purposes that were levied everywhere but Owen Sound and then the unique Owen Sound levy. We have to take that to the New Year's role, but we have to restate it as if that special Owen Sound circumstance didn't exist. That's our first step. We must do that. And so that results in a little bit of readjustment, very, very small, less than uh, you know, point one percent. So very, very tiny amount, um, really for most classes, a, a few dollars. What is the, um, what is the Owen Sound circumstance? I've referred to it a couple of times. Well, when you calculate your levy each year uh, and this uh, whether it's your, your, your notional levy or your actual levy, you calculate it on a county-wide basis using your county ratios, county tax policy for every municipality, including Owen Sound. So although Owen Sound treats commercial different than the county does, when the county calculates its levy and decides how much each local municipality is gonna be contributed, you use the county ratios. It's exactly the same as the amount to be raised in Southgate or Gray Highlands or anywhere else. So um, that creates, you know, an equity and distribution in the county levy. The difference is we take that total estimate for Owen Sound at the beginning of the year. It gets passed to the city. They apply their city tax policy to it which realigns that amount. So um, in, 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 in this uh, uh, because of their ratios, they're, you know, a little bit more of that is picked up by the commercial class. Uh, a little bit less by the residential class. There's some, there's some adjustments. Things move around a bit. Uh, but the requisition, the amount, the eight, nine seventy-four, five ninety-nine uh, is, is, is raised based on the county. That's a requisition. So it's unlike everybody else's, because everybody else is actually gonna distribute based on these ratios and the county rates. Owen Sound is gonna take the product of that and redistribute it a bit. Um, and we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about that in a few moments. Once we have our baseline, what's going on? We can look at it different ways. Uh, we looked at the status quo ratio, the distribution of tax for twenty twenty-four before levy increase and, and policy change. We can also look at typical properties. Um, we do prepare a um uh, study every year for county and local staff uh, which they have that includes information like this, but also a full sort of, we break down the levy in a number of different ways as well as the growth. So if you wanted to dig into that, that is available to explain how taxes change. This can be helpful to my observational measures. Where do we start with? Um, the, the, the other thing about looking at, say, an individual levy or levy shares uh, on a property basis, we can judge some of our um, our decisions accurately. So if we say that a, you know, a single attached residential is gonna, a default is gonna pick up um, one point, one thousand, one hundred fifty-five dollars in county levy. And we contemplating a change, we could say, what would that mean for the individual taxpayer? So these measures are helpful as a baseline. So that takes us to really what I would say is January first with our new role. So we haven't made any decisions. We haven't made any changes. We're just restating for the new year. That is your clean palate where you're gonna make your decisions for the new year in terms of spending and tax policy. Spending is something that happens in the budget. Um, we're not gonna talk about how we decide how much to raise. The fact is you decide how much you're gonna raise. Uh, and then that gets, that gets put on. It, it, you know, how much you're gonna raise isn't a factor of your tax rate or your base. It comes from another place and the tax rates are actually an outcome of that. But we, we do have to make a decision about things like tax ratios. And as I said, tax ratios mean that we have different rates for different property classes. How does that work? Well, it's not just an observation as it is in some jurisdictions in Ontario. The tax ratio is an input. It dictates what the relative tax rates are gonna be. It determines the balance of taxation. And how it does that is it augments our balance of assessment. So if we just had one rate that applied to all property, your individual property tax liability would be based on your pure share of CVA or assessment. And that's true at the property level and the class level. So for Gray County, residential properties make up seventy-four point five two percent of the base of the CVA, current value assessment. If we used a single rate that applied to all classes with no tax ratios, the residential class would be seventy-four point five two percent of the taxes. But the county's ratios change things. They reweight or readjust the CVA. Um, they say that we're gonna take a dollar a farm and we're gonna make it basically uh, treat it like it's twenty-one uh point eight cents that each dollar of CVA, which means that although they have, make up fifteen point eight zero eight percent of the CVA, they only make three point six four percent of the weighted CVA because we brought them down with the ratio. That means that they carry three point six four percent of the county's tax burden. So we take the distribution of the base in its pure form, what we're assessing, the property values, and we adjust it with the county tax policy. So that's a critical decision and it's gonna affect how much. So if we were to, you're not allowed to, but if you were to put that farm back up to one, well, their share would be much closer to fifteen percent of the levy. Not, you know, three point six four. What would that mean for the individual farmer? Well, that would multiply their taxes by, you know, four or more. So we, we can, this is, this sets a base and we can make adjustments. Adjustments, adjusting those ratios, they're your decisions, but they're made within a very rigid set of rules. Um, we won't go into all of them. They're complex and interwoven. Basically, what's important to know is what your range is. What, what is my range of flexibility every year? Um, residential is what we apply the ratio against. It's always one. That's our fixed point. You can't have everyone being independent. Um, and then these are your current ratios or what we call your starting ratios. This is your flexibility. And as you can see, for the most part, your options are to move ratios down. Um, in uh, the county reduced uh the farm ratio in twenty nineteen from two point five, where it had been since ninety-eight to two point four. And then again, the two point, um, point two one eight. So it brought those down. As I mentioned earlier, there was high rates of, of farm change that, that adjusted for that. In twenty twenty-one, both the county and the city, and these aren't shown here, but they're kind of like a, think of them as a sub-ratio, um, eliminated subclass discounts for vacant uh and excess land within the commercial industrial property classes. And that meant that you flattened out the ratios and brought them down a bit for the commercial industrial. In other words, no longer a thirty percent discount for a vacant land compared to the parcel of land next door that was the same size, both have an acre of commercial land. One has a donut shop on it, one of its vacant. In the past, they both got taxed on the land and the donut shop got taxed on the building, but the land that was unimproved was discounted. So that was, that was a decision made in twenty twenty-one. And in twenty twenty-three, both the city and the county reduced their multi-residential ratios. And the county's ratio was reduced one quarter of the way from where it was in twenty twenty-two to uh twenty, uh, to one, which would be equal with residential and new multi-residential. Now, that was theoretically a one-quarter move towards equalization. That was last year's decision. This year's a fresh That was last year's decision. This year's a fresh decision. You didn't make a decision, even if you did on the premise of making a decision to do it over four years. It's, it's a fresh decision every year. And um, so we've modeled a couple of different things just to show you. How this works and what happens when we change ratios. We've shown you what the next step would be in a multi residential ratio reduction. So if you did make that second move in the ratio towards one. Um, you would reduce the multi residential ratio by eight point two nine percent. Um, and uh, it would, it would reduce the share of tax. We've also included here um, an illustrative example. What would happen if you reduce the commercial ratio? Uh, well, the commercial ratio, if we reduced it by the exact same amount, it would produce a different outcome. Well, that's because um, you know, the, the share of taxes. In the multi res is much smaller than the commercial. So in the uh, commercial multi res makes up one point nine five percent of your base currently tax base. Whereas commercial is seven point seven five. So making the exact same magnitude of change on the commercial class compared to the multi res would be much more dramatic. Uh, it would, you know, result in a shift on to other classes of point six five. Whereas the same multi residential change is only point one six because the class is smaller. So. It's not just how much you move a ratio, it's how big the class was before the move that we have to consider. So we don't want to do this intuitively. We want to look at the actual impacts. And here, here they are at a class level at the county levy. Um, before levy increase, uh, this is notional or revenue neutral. If you reduce the multi residential ratio by that second uh, second year of a four year move. It would shift forty six thousand dollars in county levy off of the multi residential class. And because no other ratios are changing, at least in this model, they would all increase at the same rate. Um, point one six percent. So less than a quarter percent impact on all other taxpayers to get that multi res down. Uh, there would be um, uh, you know. Why do we see the larger shift, this shift off of Owen Sound? Well, Owen Sound actually has. A significant portion of the county's multi residential base. So those, those taxes there are shifting out of Owen Sound. Partially off the Owen Sound requisition because there's so much multi res in there. This is where it gets a little bit, a little bit complicated, but um. We'll, we'll leave Owen Sound uh, away for a second. The individual impact within each local area municipality or the municipalities um, share. It will shift taxes um, out of municipalities with more multi res. And into municipalities uh, with less multi res. But those shifts are happening in the same way. These class shifts were happening. So it's not coming off these municipalities or coming onto these municipalities generally. The internal shifts are going to be dependent in your local area municipality. Um, and again, you know, this analysis has been done in detail, but for illustrative purposes here. County levy shifts uh, are going to be at the same rate. Everybody's multi res. That is taxed on the county rate is going to go down point eight point one four percent. Everybody's residential on the county levy is going to go up point one six percent. Your local levy shifts under this scenario are going to depend on how much multi res you have. So Hanover that has significant multi res. They're going to see a more dramatic impact locally on the local area level. So that Hanover levy. Chatsworth, who really has virtually no multi res, I think that's just a parcel of unimproved land perhaps. You're going to see almost no impact on your local levy because the class is very small. So there are some complexities here um, in terms of what happens with the county levy and the local levy. Another miss, just to illustrate this, we had a municipality, I had doing a similar. Model or progression with the municipality last year. Uh, eh, in another county and. The, the mayor of, of, of the most urban center said, why are we only moving this much? It doesn't seem to be making an effect. Well, within. That mayor's local municipality, because they had all the multi res, it was actually very dramatic on the local. So we, we, you know, we can't move things too fast. We have to consider the impact. What happens with the Owen Sound thing? And I created this, this, this table um, to show you kind of a few things. The bottom line is. And I'll explain this in a sec, but I'll give you the, the principle first. If the county reduces its multi res ratio. And the city doesn't reduce theirs. Those reductions will not flow through strategically. To the multi res buildings within Owen Sound. That reduction in the city's requisition will be shared generally by all of this, by all taxpayers within the city. Um, so it's important because this is, because of. The fact that Owen Sound sets some ratios and such a huge proportion of the multi res. County's multi res is in the, in the city. These are things that need to happen in tandem in order to affect. County's policy decision, if you were to make it saying, we want to reduce taxes on, on rental buildings. If you want to flow that through, it needs to be done in tandem. So um, you know, for example, and what we've shown here is that uh, um. You know, county reduction only, then it's not going to shift. There's not going to be any local levy shifts. Uh, it's going to flow through and we see in here. Really, every taxpayer in Owen Sound would be enjoying a point five seven percent reduction. There would be nothing happening to this lo- local levy shifts. Now, if both the county and the city reduce them, then things are much more even. We see that. There's a flow through right to the multi res. We're strategically targeting those tax reductions to the multi res class. Which if you made this decision, would be your intent. Um, generally, that, that would, that would be the on a surface level intent. If the city does it themselves and the county doesn't do it, well, that becomes very, um, you know. Difficult for the uh, um, local residential taxpayers because they are picking up. Solely bur- the burden of, of reducing the multi res burden and reducing the local um, burden. So. Ideally, you know, it would happen in tandem. And I know there's a lot going on here. The, the idea is. Cause your needs and circumstances, you want to coordinate your efforts in this regard. Now, um. There's, you know, multi res. I'm not, uh, my job is not to tell you why you should reduce the multi res or if you should or recommend it. But I will um, just say, right now, it is the most. Active ratio that I'm aware of province wide. Um. It's actively being moved down by many, many jurisdictions for. Housing. I mean, housing is huge. It's a big thing. There's also been indications or suggestions that the province might eliminate that differential. Um, so some municipalities are, are moving it on partially on the basis that. Well, we don't want a big shock if that gets eliminated. We'd like to move there on our own scheme. But, you know. I think everybody can agree that over the past couple of decades, we've never seen. An issue that's so, a municipal issue that is so global. And so um, getting so much attention is housing, right? It is, it is a big, big thing. Um, so. Those decisions with your tax ratios are going to be about the distribution in tax. Their share. I'm just going to wrap up with explaining how. Other tax change, the final tax change would be municipal levy increase. And this is the amount you decide you need to raise. Really, you have growth, which brings on new revenue from new taxpayers. But we're in inflationary time. So we have to, we have to try to keep up with that. Generally, there's a municipal levy increase. Across the, certainly our client base, which is a significant portion of municipal community in Ontario. And in the news, levy increases are, are higher than, than, than we had seen traditionally. Uh, in, in lower um, in lower inflationary periods, you know, in recent history. So it's more important that we understand what levy change does. And if we have a levy change in this, in this uh, we have a levy change. That we are going to raise an additional four point two seven, we, you are going to raise it to this, you know, four point two or six point one four percent. Now, if no tax policy changes, then. Everybody goes up by six point one four percent in county levy. We always measure levy change last and it's always applied equally against whatever our base is. Our revenue neutral base. If this is the amount, sixty nine thou- sixty nine million, six hundred forty five, three eighty five. That's the amount your base raised on December thirty first last year within, within a few dollars around it. And so if we raise that amount this year, everybody pays what they were paying last year at the end of the year. New property, it would be your year end tax. Existing property would have been your starting, whatever you go on your tax bill. When we raise more, everybody shares in that. Um, it rides on top. So if we change our ratios. Then we may have more. We're going to have differential net change. Cause remember our adjustment to the um, multi res ratio, which we modeled. That hypothetical model showed that we would shift some taxes off of multi res. And we would shift them on to other classes. So the year over year change in overall revenue remains the same. Six point one four percent. But the net year over year change on a class by class basis. Though my, rather than going up six point one five percent. My residential tax, county taxes would go up six point three two percent. County levy change, that doesn't get the county any more money. But the residential class and these other classes would pick up a little bit more of that. There would be a net tax reduction, um, you know, with that corresponding shift for multi res. We want to, you know, again, I said in a, in a two tier is super important, particularly. In a two tier, it's, this is important everywhere, but in a two tier, it's really important to keep this straight. We, when we're measuring year over year, we can measure net change. And if we looked at last year's bylaw and this year's bylaw, and this was your levy number, number that we just taught, we, we just showed you this number here. Well, the county bylaw would show a levy, levy difference compared to last year of eight point eight one percent. We must not take that as an indication. That your great county residents and taxpayers are paying eight point eight one percent more than they la- did last year. That's not the case. Okay, remember we had one point seven million in growth. We had a tiny little year end shift. This revenue neutral is the restatement of, 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 of that. So. When we go from here as levied in last year's county bylaw to here. This difference is not carried by Chatsworth taxpayers in general. It is carried by these Chatsworth taxpayers, just a few of them. And then the levy change rides on top of that. So. If I'm in Chatsworth under this model, my county taxes are going up six point one four percent. Not six point nine three and not eleven point zero four, eight point eight. Okay, so. Just kind of, I know I'm hammering that home, but it is an important consideration because. Um, you know, when the information goes out there to the taxpayers and then. So we, we, we don't want to misrepresent how much more my, my taxes are going to go up. And if we want to consider the full cycle, everything, we can measure everything separately. You know, this is a growth. This is from new taxpayers. This is our year end restatement. It's just an adjustment. Um, it would be more dramatic in a reassessment year. These are our policy shifts. These are our ratio change. If you were to make that ratio change we talked about. Then we restate. And then we apply levy change equally. Again, we can measure all the way from here. You know, the final levy way back to last year's as levy, we can observe that change. But we want to be careful about what we attribute it to. It is caused by different things. Because it's caused by different things. Different taxpayers are affected differently. Um, so we don't want to, and I, I kind of belabored this a bit. Because these issues and patterns weren't as evident. When growth was slower and inflation was lower. We're in a higher inflationary period with higher growth. So as those numbers grow, the impacts, these impacts become more dramatic. And the difference between saying, oh, my county taxes are changing one point two and they're changing point nine eight. And, oh, my county taxes are changing by um, eleven when they're changing by six is a much different thing. So that's why I've kind of. Um, driven this home a little bit. So that's my prepared content. Um, I hope, hopefully I went through it. Officially without glossing over too much. I'm happy to answer any questions, revisit anything I said. Um, or discuss anything related to, to this subject.
Well, thank you, Peter. I uh, I see your presentation every year and I think, yep, I got it. If somebody asked me an hour later to describe the details, I'd be calling you. Does anybody have any questions for Peter? Mary Lou, would you like to make some remarks?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, thank you, Peter. He's such a great resource. And um, he did, you've got the abbreviated version. We did a full day with Peter in November. Uh, that our finance team came to and we invited all of uh, our member municipality treasury staff to, to send people. So. And I got some very positive feedback on, you know, even from some well experienced treasurers. They're like. Okay, yeah, this, this is good. And it's, it's just, it's such good training. So. We're grateful to, to have Peter to access. Um, the one thing I was going to say is, so as part of the November session. With the treasurer group, we did have a conversation about. What our tax policy would look like for twenty twenty four. And sometimes we're, we're asked, why don't we pass tax policy in advance of the year? And Peter's already answered that in the beginning of his presentations that we can't. So in that tax policy discussion, we talked about whether there was any interest or anything else we needed to do. Other than the, the one quarter further movement to ratchet down. The multi res rate to, to eventually get after four years to the new multi res rate. Um, the answer, there was no further comments. And um, you know, in conversation, obviously with Owen Sound for the reasons. Peter has mentioned is that, you know, it's, if we want to accomplish what we're setting out to do. We need to be doing the same thing at the same time. And that was the conversation with Owen Sound's treasurer as well, that that was what they were looking to do. So I guess my next step would be based on this presentation is we'd bring back the tax policy bylaw. So tax po- tax bylaw, sorry. Um, in March, we'd bring that the fourteenth. So that we set the rates and then we provide that information to all your locals. Because I know they're looking to calculate and say what the impact is um, with your own municipality as well.
Okay, thank you, Mary Lou. Counselor Echols, if you had a question, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. And through you, Mr. Warden, and I don't know whether this will go to Peter or to Mary Lou. Peter, you said, you know, you've mentioned quite a bit about the notational tax rate. Been a bit of a bugaboo for a number of years. And I've asked the province uh, at a couple of different conferences about this. Is it policy now or regulation that all municipalities must do a notational tax rate? Or are there some municipalities still out there? Uh, budging on that process a little bit.
Through you, Warden. Uh, if I, unless Barry Lou would like to go ahead. Um.
No, she's waiting for you.
It's, it, it's a tricky one. Uh, so the, the legislation, there's nowhere in the legislation says you must announce a notional revenue neutral tax rate. But that it is embedded in many aspects of the, of the act that we have what we call a revenue limit. And the revenue limit is your December thirty first position and you restate that on the new rule. So. Yes, it's, it's, it's convention, it's, it's embedded in a whole bunch of calculations to say you have to restate. Where municipalities, there are municipalities that talk about their rate. So what's my rate change? What's my rate from this year to last year? Um, we've always counseled against that and said, you, you need a notional rate, you need to reset it. Because this is going to be the measure of how much your levy change is, not your rate. And during reassessment, what would happen is. My assessment would go up. Remember those early illustrations I gave you and said, hey, my, my assessment went up sixteen percent. Um, I'm keeping my rate the same and. Um, I'm keeping my rate the same and I go out to the, the, the paper and say, I got a zero percent rate change. Well, your rate is the same as last year's, but guess what? You just raised sixteen percent more tax off the exact same taxpayers. That is a measured, legally measured tax increase that will show on the tax bill as a sixteen percent tax, tax change. Um, increase, a levy increase, municipal levy increase. So there are municipalities, it's not that they fudge it, but insist on announcing rate change. And I will say, those municipalities found themselves in a real pickle when reassessment was paused because they no longer, they were kinda grabbing the reassessment change of those phases as growth when it wasn't growth. They were reporting on it was growth. They were telling the taxpayers, we're keeping the rate the same. Guess what? In a reassessment, in a non-assessment year, we don't get that. Our notional rate, your notional rate, counselor, is for twenty twenty four is your twenty twenty three actual. That's, that, so we're still doing the calculation. So when we do our analysis, our systems still do the same calculation. But in twenty twenty and twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, it threw at a slower rate. In twenty twenty four, it throws at your last year's rate. That's how the regulated math works. So I don't know if that's helpful.
Mary Lou, did you wanna add anything to that? Okay, good answer. Any other questions? Not seeing any. Counselor Echols.
One more, and I guess it, it, it certainly flows into the shift on tax rates. Um, Gray County and a number of um, counties, upper tiers went through this, probably five, six years ago. Um, and in Gray County, especially because of the shift in the farm assessment uh, went up so much. And that's when, I think it's been twice in the last number of years that the ratio for farms has dropped so that that percentage, the overall percentage of the tax uh, county uh, revenue that farms contributed stayed the same. So it was dropped so that that percentage would stay the same. Is there any thought at any point in time, what's gonna happen when reassessment does happen? And the residential, are we prepared to be able to move that back up so that the farm tax or the farm uh, taxpayer is still gonna be able to uh, maintain their percentage of the annual revenues that are generated or needed to be generated by the county at that point in time? Mary Lou?
So now we're crafting tax policy here on the fly. So Mary Lou?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. You've basically answered the question that that's a tax policy decision that would be made within the year. So when there's a, a reassessment and we have data, that would be the opportunity to take a look at what this looks like and how much res went up in comparison and what our tax policy will be for that year. Good question.
Okay, any other? Oh, Council McQueen.
Just to follow up with that, but on the flip side, if, if agricultural lands continue to go up and residential has a tendency to start taper off, that's also part of the discussion. As I think I'm, I'm seeing out there that farms are still continuing, you know, to keep going up, up to demand. But residential, I think you're starting to see a little bit of a taper. Probably seeing a little bit of a falling back, but I don't see that yet on the agricultural lands yet. Maybe that's gonna change with commodities, but that's a whole philosophical discussion, you know, which we're having. Thank you.
Yeah, there's about sixteen sides to the coin on this, to be. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Peter. Appreciate your, uh, your time and your efforts to uh, demystify, demystify tax policy.
You're welcome, Warden. Thank you for uh, making time for me today. Always a pleasure.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Um, let's see, it is ten after eleven. Why don't we take a break? We'll reconvene in uh, why don't we say quarter, shorter, we'll try for quarter past eleven. Um. Thanks, Rob. Okay, we'll uh, bring the meeting back to order. The uh, next item on the agenda is the determination of items requiring separate discussion. Anybody like any of the items in the consent agenda removed? Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you, Warden Milton. Can I please pull six B correspondence?
Yes, you can. Any others? Okay, could I have a motion to receive for information, the other items, Counselor Deckard and Counselor Pringle? Save and accept six B. All those in favor? That is Carrie. Thank you very much. Um, items for direction and discussion, seven A. First is regarding regulating uh, amendments to the bylaw, regulating traffic and parking within the county of Gray Road System. So I see Trevor is going to join us or has joined us today to re, uh, give the report. So welcome, Trevor, and the floor is yours, sir. Sorry, we need a mover and seconder. My apology. Counselor Mackey and Counselor McKay.
Thank you, Warden Milton, and good morning, County Council. Um, I guess today we're bringing some amendments to bylaw four, seven, eight, eight dash thirteen for regulating traffic and parking within Gray County. Uh, this is a pretty standardized report that we bring usually about twice a year, depending on requests and uh, different changes that we find uh, internally uh, through staff investigations and also requests from the public. So the first one, um, it's actually a change. We'll go to the next slide. Currently, we had a request from uh, a denture clinic in Hanover at uh, property four, four, three on Tenth Street. They have a lot of clients um, that use uh, soggy mobility and also just um, general accessibility concerns that they have that. So the denture clinic has an accessible entrance at the front of their property. But again, the parking lot's in the back and a lot of those uh, clients have to either get dropped off in the back and walk around all the way to the front to try to get into the building. So it's just more of a basically trying to secure a spot in front of the building because a lot of times the uh, soggy mobility will drive up. There's someone parked in that spot. So obviously they gotta go into the back of the lot or kind of block the entrance to allow those uh, clients to get out of the vehicle. So uh, the request was really just to have a spot that's secured so that um, their clients can more easily access the facility. Uh, so we agree with that. Um, and we're gonna add that uh, parking spot as a no parking except for disability permit uh, spot. So the next slide there. This was the uh, speed request change that came in from uh, resolution from the municipality of Gray Highlands. The, I believe a resident had requested extending the fifty kilometer speed limit out to the garden center there at the south end. Um, so that currently is a five hundred meter piece of road that is under fifty kilometers and that would be represented by the blue section on the screen. Uh, the extension was a total of an additional six hundred and seventy five meters, uh, which is identified in green. Now, based on our Gray County Speed Limit Evaluation Policy, uh, we didn't find that this was warranted to be reduced. Um, from a perspective rate change, or rates of speed. However, what we do uh, wanna change it is because the Ontario Traffic Manual Book Five, whenever there's a difference of speed between anything more than twenty kilometers per hour, uh, they prefer to have an additional transition period or transition zone uh, of anything less than, so either a ten or twenty kilometer speed increase. So again, because this is going from a fifty to an eighty, in our recommendation is to switch this green section to a sixty, which more or less, it gets relatively close to the fifty that's requested, but also provides, um, it doesn't extend that zone out far, too far because um, what we expect is there's really no residential accesses. There's no real reasons for the speed to be uh, changed, like driver perception. A lot of driver behavior will still recognize that as a potential eighty zone, uh, even though, whether it's posted or not, it's just driver behaviors tend to uh, go that way. The reason we decided to go with the sixty is if we didn't make this a fifty, we would then need to include the transition zone. And then all of a sudden, we're a kilometer and a half out of Maxwell and then we're really getting into a situation where we're gonna a kilometer and a half out of Maxwell, and then we're really getting into a situation where we're going to see drivers that are driving relatively fast because there's really no indicators that this is a residential area. So that would be, the recommendation is again to make that green zone a sixty kilometer posted speed limit. So the next location is on Gray Road fifteen. Now, this came in a request from a resident that lives on this small stretch of Highway twenty-six, and they were just noticing that as people come around that curb, it's, the property is actually the one that's right, the entrance right on the south side of that curb. And they would notice that vehicle speeds were fast, and there was concern about getting out of their driveways. The other issue along the stretch is that is only a three hundred and seventy-five meter stretch of fifty kilometers on that blue piece. And based again on the OT or Ontario Traffic Manual, they require a five hundred meter stretch for any posted speed limit. So what we're recommending in this situation is extending the fifty kilometer speed limit through the green section, which would be a total five hundred and seventy-five meters, which is more than the minimum of OTM. And then further including a transition zone of seventy kilometers, which is identified in purple. Now, the reason we chose seventy kilometers instead of sixty in this case is because there's a string of residential properties you can see in the aerial imagery. And we believe that extending out for the one kilometer at that reduced speed would help to tie in a lot more properties while also still providing a transition zone that meets the Ontario Traffic Manual. The next location. It's Gray Road thirty-one, which is in the little hamlet of Rob Roy. In this situation, we had a request from a resident who is looking to extend the current sixty kilometer speed zone that is east of the Pretty River Road there. It's identified in blue. This request was to, basically, the area identified in green is a stretch that's from the top of one hill to the top of another hill, and it's a large valley through there. And what they were applying is they would like to extend the speed so that people would have an idea to slow down before they start to crest over the hill and run into the valley. What we found and why there is a current sixty kilometer speed limit there is there is a vertical curve issue at the church where there's a crest that meets a lower speed limit. So the sixty is there for that specific reason. Within the rest of the green identified area, there's no nothing that kind of identifies that to be, require any sort of speed reduction. There's not enough houses or anything that kind of causes that reduction in the speed evaluation policy. Question?
Counselor McQueen, sorry.
Would you like questions now or at the end? Okay, so through you, Mr. Warden, and very familiar with this particular request. It came to our police services board last summer. I don't know if that's, it probably is captured on Zoom. So part of the argument was, that was brought forward by one individual, was he lives on the section of road that is across from the church. And one particular day, he was out on his tractor with a wagon. Because of the two hills, so if you look at, for everybody, look at the very top where the green starts, that's where you start to crest the hill. And then it goes down a few times, and it gets down, and then when he gets to the intersection, which is Rob Roy, it still continues to rise to the crescent, which has been mentioned. The issue that was raised, because there's a, on that road, it's very narrow. There's a lot of guardrails on there. And he was on his tractor, and this big, large truck came over full speed, was upon him before he even and because there's no place for him to pull over, the concern was is could that be problematic because of eighty kilometers, well, eighty plus? So part of the argument was, it is, there's those guardrails, there's no place to pull over. So if there's somebody that accidentally is going too fast, and there's a slow, we do have farm vehicles on our roads, that there's no place to go. So that was a big part of the argument of, you know, it's a county road, people travel it, and county roads are to move, but it is a hill situation that it also has to be properly and sand it and salt it. So if that was a situation where there couldn't be, you know, so that was the large argument to lower that from each top of each hill. I did drive it this morning, and I think in your, it said twenty meters on both sides of those nine one one numbers. I don't think you would need that. I think long as you were where those nine, it's mentioned in there, the nine one one numbers are basically on top of those hills. I understand that you'd give some notice behind that, but I don't think you would need to go twenty meters because then it just gets longer and longer. But that's a strong, that was a strong argument. Why that? Because there's no place to go. So I'll leave it at that, Mr. Chair. I may make an amendment for that, to make that argument change, but I can carry on, but, but.
Good. Oh, sorry.
I understand the county road systems to move people, but it was a pretty good argument that brought, and then after that, the police did start setting up radar along there, and it does, and I, and I will say that the county has put the flashing sixty flashing, that's has helped it. I think it's, it's helped it greatly, but that is the big part when big trucks come over the hill, because there are two quarries to the, to the south. If there was ever a situation and a small tractor or a big tractor couldn't get off, there's no place to go, because it's, it's sort of, it's sort of challenged. If you can see the lay of the land, there's a lot of environmental rivers making stop that, it's just some places you just don't have that full. So anyway, I'll leave it at that, but that was part of the argument that was raised last, and our county services board.
Thank you.
And to that point, it is definitely something we understand, and we've had that seen the correspondence and gone through that, and do you understand there is a concern there? It's one of those situations where what we put up, we put our speed counters in in that location, and what we found is effectively, even within the sixty kilometers speed zone, we're not seeing a change of speed to like identify that reduction. So what tends to happen is by reducing the speed limit, you just create a bigger like disparity in those speeds, and that's effectively what happens with the tractor. When the tractor's going slow and these faster cars are coming over, it creates an increased risk of collision. So unfortunately, with farm vehicles, their speed is generally slow. Whereas general traffic, by increasing that, you're just expanding on the risk associated with difference in speed limit.
Go ahead, Counselor McQueen.
So there, on that particular road, you do get a different array of traffic patterns, plus you on a fright. I think it was two years ago, first snowfall, and this is the problem that people don't necessarily adjust to their speed, and I understand you can post it. But I will say, when OPP set up their radar, it did change. People got the, got the message, once you do that, and if there's a larger zone that they can be enforced. I think it was three years ago, color lost control, hit one of our snowplows right at the bottom of that first part. Now, right at that bottom of that first part, it split, split the truck pretty well in half. Our plow had to go into the ditch, and it was even just before the sixty is there. And the problem is, is people drive, and sometimes they don't adjust to the conditions of the road, and that is an area that does have a lot of different types of traffic. So I, I, again, I, I understand, but I think from seeing the traffic patterns on that road and the issues that have happened and the narrowness of those roads. Right, you posted, they still have to drive it, but it, it has changed a little bit in the narrower sections of that sixty and being enforced, but there is things that have happened, and that one is, it hit one of our snowplows, and it was the first snowfall, and I think it was like, maybe it was three years ago, first snowfall. Didn't adjust the speed. And our, fortunately, nobody was hurt. I think our plow had to veer to the left to get away, and a, and a, and a vehicle pickup truck went to the right. Usually, the plow goes to the right, but it had to veer to the left to get, to miss it, and they, it smoked it. So I'll leave it at that. I will raise it later on. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. I thought it was just some West Gray people didn't slow down. Trevor.
Sure, yeah. So that is effectively more or less the rest of the Gare Road thirty-one here, but again, it will forward. Again, our recommendation again is to not make an adjustment there. Now, however, the next one, Graywood one nineteen. This was brought through a report TRCW twenty-one twenty-three, which we presented to council on October twelfth of last year, and it was approved by county council on twenty-sixth of October. So again, this one is a speed increase within the blue section between Ravenna and just outside of Banks, and then a reduction to fifty kilometers per hour in Banks. Again, that was all identified within the report from last year. So now we move to some changes in school zones. Again, this was another issue that was brought forward from great municipality, Great Highlands Council. And I believe it was the community zone within Maxwell that was also requesting this adjustment. What we have here is the written, the current school zone is shown with both the kind of purple and red section. And the proposal is to move the school zone to the east side of Gray Road two. And this is predominantly because as travelers that are coming up Gare Road two and coming down the concession, Route forty-five fairly, they end up basically coming into the village, and they don't recognize that they're in a school zone because there's no signs or identify, identification of that situation. The other concern is with the school zone being so far to the west side of the school that you kind of, you see those signs, and then you keep driving, and you kind of lose track, oh, you just don't really sense that there's a school there. So moving it closer to the actual school helps to identify the drivers. Yeah, okay, there's the sign, and schools up ahead, and they can make those adjustments easier rather than you kind of just lose track as you're driving. So we recommend making that change, and the other change in school zone, although it's not identified within an image, it's just a simple housekeeping item. And that's a change to the Cedarville Breezes School. The, basically, the times of the day where the signals are flashing, it's just adjusted to more accurately match their school delivery and pickup times. And then we have two no parking concerns. So the first one's on Gray Road two near Colapore. We've had some requests because of a lot of what we find parking cars that are using the Bruce Trail in this location. Of course, that presents a dangerous situation because it is on the crest of a hill, so cars coming over top of that. Essentially, again, they're not aware, and people getting in other vehicles, it just presents an unsafe location for parking. Further, we do have the Colapore Upland Parking Lot just there to the south, which also has access to the trail system. So we believe that's a better option for people out for enjoyment, or enjoying a day of hiking. So yeah, we recommend that the no parking zone be included at this location. And then the other no parking zone is on Gray Road eighteen, at the Gray Roads Museum to Inglewood Falls Road, and a short bit on both sides. This is predominantly due to, basically, the high school prom. A lot of the students there come to take pictures of the residents there in the corner, and it ends up being a lot of people parking on the county road, which presents a pretty dangerous situation. A lot of kids are not necessarily focused on traffic. They're enjoying the night out with their friends, and you just see this as a risk. There's also been discussions that they can utilize the museum parking and then access the property across the field, which provides a much safer alternative. So our recommendation is to include the no parking zone for this location. And that's all of the changes for this round. So any questions?
Are there any questions for Trevor? Seeing none? I have a mover and seconder. I'll call the question if there's no further discussion. Counselor McQueen. Okay, that's what I was anticipating.
Sorry. I, I, sorry, Mr. Warden, I will move an amendment to, not numbered, so to the area of Gray Road thirty-one. My amendment is from Gray Road thirty-one at four six nine three five eight Gray Road thirty-one, and at four six nine five seven zero Gray Road thirty-one in the municipality of Gray Highlands. Rob Roy requests a reduction from eighty to sixty for that particular length. It does say on here to go twenty meters each side. I think that's a little excessive. And if I can get a seconder, I could maybe speak a bit more to it.
Okay, is there a seconder for that motion? Counselor Nielsen. Discussion, Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I, you know, I understand the county road system is to move people. If anybody's driven that road, it is enough, you know, it is part of the escarpment. It's not a flat section of road. Also, further to what I mentioned before about the concern about vehicles and coming over the crest of those hills, there is a, there is a church with an active cemetery. And the, there are times where there are funerals there at that church as well, where the sixty is right basically just right at that area of the cemetery, and there are to experience high speed of traffic, people not slowing up quick enough. And I think from the reasons I said before, it's just a very hilly, very non-sightline area that could be, I don't see why there wouldn't be a reason why you reduce it to sixty at the top of the hills from a safety perspective, from all the reasons I raised, so.
Oh. Okay, good. Thank you, Counselor McQueen. Any other discussion on the amendment? I'll call the question on the, oh, Counselor Greg.
Thank you, Warden Milton, and I would like to speak out against the amend, amendment on the floor. This is over two kilometers long in a rural setting. I think there's, the information in the report is enough for me to be convinced to not vote in favor of the amendment. We at some point have to have a policy and have to have something to stand on and have to have something to support staff against every individual coming forward that lives on a county road system. This, you look at the map, it, I've been on the road. It does have some ups and downs, but we've got county roads, hundreds of kilometers of county roads that have ups and downs, and if we're just going to fold and look to assess everyone and reduce the speed limit to sixty or fifty upon request after request, I don't see how we're going to be further ahead and achieving our objectives. People want to move. If people are deciding to speed, that's an enforcement issue, and I hope they get caught, but I certainly support our staff and their recommendation on this one. That's where I'll leave it.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor McQueen.
Well, to sort of counter that. So this area going downhill is eighty kilometers an hour, which means people can do a hundred kilometers an hour. You have a triaxle dump truck full of, full of gravel. A car can stop within so much distance, a truck cannot. Just a tractor going down a hill, and he can't get off the road, what happened? I use the example of the snowplow where the snowplow had to go to the left to get out of the road of a, of a pickup truck that was probably going too fast, and that is in the area that's not a question of sixty that's current today. That's the next question, they vary up eighty. There's been incidents on that road. As I said, there's been many funerals there that have had situations that could be questioned. You've got a gravel truck coming down that hill and lose control because it's different. Cars can stop within a distance. Large gravel pit trucks cannot. Until they crest that hill, they cannot see what's on that hill. It's, it's flat, flat along, and then all of a sudden, you go down the hill. And there are times when there's a lot of material being moved to other parts of the county, and if you know, when gravel is being moved, sometimes time is, is of the essence. And people push limits, and it just, it's different if that road had lots of shoulders and lots of area to get off the road, but it is not because it's, it's because of the lay of the land and the, and the environment there. Some of those areas is really tight on the guardrails. I think there's one section that's twenty-nine, twenty-nine feet. Well, there's no route, and it does have the, the paved shoulders, which I think it was one of the first roads that had the paved shoulders in our county road system. But a lot of cyclists use that road as well. It, all I'm saying is until somebody crests that hill, they do not know what's down the hill. And I'm just saying is, the sense of changing that, not to a fifty, but to a sixty, is, I think it's warranted. And I'm just saying is the sense of changing that, not to a fifty, but to a sixty is, I think it's warranted. You you, if you drive the road, you know that it's not a flat road and it's uh and there are a lot of gravel trucks that do travel that road. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? I'll call the question. All those in favor of the amendment? That fails. Absolutely. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Mackey. Counselor Mackey is opposed. Counselor McKay. Counselor McKay is opposed. Counselor Carlton. Counselor Carlton is in favor. Counselor Pringle. Counselor Pringle is opposed. Counselor McQueen. Counselor McQueen is in favor. Counselor Nielsen. Counselor Nielsen is opposed. Counselor Patterson. Counselor Patterson is in favor. Counselor Dickert. Counselor Dickert is opposed. Counselor Kentner. Counselor Kenner is in favor. Counselor Keveney. Counselor Keveney is opposed. Counselor Body. Counselor Body is opposed. Counselor Greg. Counselor Greg is opposed. Warden Milne.
Opposed.
Warden Milne is opposed. Counselor DeBreen. Opposed. Sorry, opposed. Counselor DeBreen is opposed. Counselor Matrasovs. Counselor Matrasovs in favor. Counselor Bordeon.
In favor.
Counselor Bordeon in favor. Counselor Echols. Counselor Echols opposed. Counselor Hutchinson. Counselor Hutchinson is opposed. That motion is lost sixty to thirty six.
Thank you, Tara. So now we're back to the amendment or back to the motion. Unamended as it was originally proposed. Any further discussion on that motion? I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Trevor. Appreciate your time. Moving on to the next report is a planning efficiencies report. Guess who's up at quarter to twelve? Scott Taylor. Morning, Scott. Would someone care to move this, please? Counselor McKay and Counselor Carlton. Scott, welcome.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Warden, and uh good uh good morning, uh, Mr. Warden, members of County Council. Between tax policy and and parking and traffic bylaws and now planning efficiencies. Boy, what an exciting day. So I'm I'm just thrilled to be part of the excitement here and I'll try to keep this efficient. Um, just before we get into it, I would like to actually introduce uh somebody in the audience today. We have with us today. Uh, Emily Burdur, who is a master's planning student from the University of Guelph. And as part of their education, uh, their students are required to shadow a planner for a day. Um, so Emily has come to to shadow the Gray County Planning Team. I say this so you'll go easy on me and not scare Emily away from planning. Um, but no, I it it is a it the University of Guelph runs a wonderful planning program and and we've been been lucky to part with. Partner with them on a number of occasions in the past. And I I think having this, having this ability to come out and and see what planners do in the field. Uh, is really important. So we we thank County Council for for allowing Emily to be here today. And so with that, we will get into the report. Um, so this uh I I've said this before, but this one really was a team effort. Uh, a lot of the the work on the the discussion paper was largely done by former senior planner, Hiba Hussein. Uh, all the other planners, both at Gray County and at the municipal level have contributed here. Uh, we had significant input from our C O, our deputy C O, our legal services staff. Uh, and then there was a a large amount of dialogue with your own municipal C O's and municipal planners as well. So. I just want to thank everybody that contributed to this report because I think it is. Uh, a more robust look at our planning system at both the upper and lower tier levels. Um, with respect to why we're all here today, um, we're looking to be part of the solution alongside our friends at the province. The province has made it very clear through successive pieces of legislation. Uh, that we need to be doing more and and operating more efficiently uh within our land use planning system and 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 certainly Gray, like all municipalities in in Ontario. Uh, wants to be a part of that solution and and we want to work with council and and work with municipal councils uh to look at a more efficient system in that regard. Um, with respect to how we got here today, um, there were numerous staff reports, some of which predated some of the the um uh. Pieces of planning legislation that have been cited. Uh, there was P C, P D R, P C W O seven dash twenty two. This was a report about two years ago. Coincidentally, also right before lunch, uh, and it was looking at the potential delegation of approval authority responsibilities back to. Uh, member municipalities for plans of subdivision and condominium. Uh, and it was also looking at further efficiencies in the planning process. I can report since that recommendation was was supported by council. Uh, we haven't had any requests for delegations back to member municipalities. Uh, but we have been working behind the scenes on the planning efficiencies. Uh, council will remember uh P S P D R C W ten dash twenty three and the addendum. These were the reports that reacted to Bill twenty three and and the reduction of natural heritage commenting from the conservation authorities. And through council's support and leadership there, uh, the county was able to take on the responsibility on behalf of the county and member municipalities. And we hired our two planning ecologists. Uh, and then there was a further report done on plans of subdivision and and condominium. Uh, with respect to the provincial changes on the um uh on the the the. Uh, non uh statutory requirement anymore for for public meetings in that regard. And then we've simply listed uh four pieces of legislation uh that all amended the Planning Act and amended planning processes and. And and we're all focused on efficiencies here and we're all focused on implementing the the legislation. Uh, but I will say from a staff perspective, and I I I'm assuming your your own planning staff have experienced this and and likely at your council tables too. It is tough to be efficient when when the framework keeps changing. And and so these uh four pieces of of legislation have all changed within the past two years. Uh, and and so it's it's kind of tough to know who's on first at times, but we're doing our best to to try to be partners with the province in that regard. Um, wouldn't be a planning report without some caveats, I guess. Um, this report has been discussed, as I said, that the draft discussion paper with your municipal planners and C O's. Uh, they provided input that resulted in changes to the report. Uh, there are some more operational considerations within the discussion paper that that staff believe. Uh, we have the ability to implement on our own. Uh, and and then there's other things that will require council support. And in some cases, even future reports or bylaw changes such as the delegation of approvals. Uh, or the fees and services report uh bylaw that was passed earlier today in County Council. Uh, that obviously do require require council's blessing in that regard. With respect to your own municipal processes, we're fully aware. Uh, that each of our nine member municipalities is is different in that regard. They have different levels of planning resources on staff or on contract. And and they operate in different ways with respect to relationships to their own uh committees and municipal councils. So. None of this is meant to dictate to your uh municipal staff uh how to run their planning shop, so to speak. Uh, these are suggestions only based on what we've leaned from discussions with municipalities, both within and outside of Gray. Uh, and ways that we could explore further efficiencies in that regard. So a lot of my discussion today will really focus on our own county operational changes. But as I said, there are some some suggestions in there for municipalities. Um, this, this report should not be construed as legal advice. Um, certainly, if you are looking at changes to your own bylaws or processes, it's always advisable to seek your own independent uh legal advice in that regard. And finally, I just note with respect to this, uh, since this report was was initially conceived approximately a year ago. Um, there's been further changes at the province and and as of December thirteenth, uh, two thousand twenty three, as we saw in the P D A C correspondence from last week. Uh, there's further changes coming and further provincial consultations. So as always, staff will 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 try to keep abreast of of those potential changes or. Input opportunities back to the province and and make County Council aware. And and should anything in those future changes change what's uh what's being recommended here today, obviously, we would come back to council and adjust accordingly. So with respect to some of the county changes, um, the first one, actually, I'm pleased to say, as of County Council this morning, you've already completed. Um, so great job on on being efficient in that regard. Um, this was a change that we were recommending to look at updating our fees and services. Uh, charges to increase our planning fees, but also to implement a a new municipal review fee uh such that we could help root. Recoup the costs of those um planning ecology services. And that would come from applicants and developers and it wouldn't come uh from from levy. So with that, we'll continue to monitor those charges. Make sure that we are collecting uh what we believe we'll be collecting and come back to council with further information. One of the other changes uh in in the right hand column there that you'll see um is is trying to look at um. Reducing any duplicative staff efforts at the upper and lower tier levels in this regard. Um, and again, we're we're cognizant that the municipalities are all staff differently and have different resource levels. Um, but we do believe at all nine member municipalities, um, you have qualified planners either on staff or on contract. And and so we want to reduce those instances uh where you might be getting uh two similar opinions from a county planner and a local planner in that regard. Um, so we do believe on on some applications, including uh site plans, minor variances, Niagara Scarpment Development Permits. Uh, there's not much of a role for the county planners to play here. Uh, there could be a small role uh when one of those applications is on a piece of county infrastructure. So when we're dealing with Pat and Trevor and their team in transportation, uh, we would still help provide those um transportation comments. And uh where there's ecological elements or natural heritage elements, uh, we would still engage our our planning ecologists because they operate on the whole. Behalf of both the county and the municipalities. Uh, but our goal is to to shorten or or eliminate some of the comments you see. Uh, particularly in your service settlement areas where you have detailed municipal official plan policies in place in most regards. And where you also have uh detailed zoning provisions. Uh, so one of the the areas for for uh reduced duplication here would be to. Limit those comments, uh, uh, except where there's county infrastructure or services involved in that regard. Uh, with respect to um some of the other recommended process changes, um. This first one is a little awkward to present, and I just need to caveat this with saying this is this is not intended to be a power grab in any way. Um, we are looking at recommending to County Council uh that you consider delegating the approval authority for plans of subdivision and condominium. Uh, to county staff where there's already been municipal support for that application. And the municipality has already given their input on recommended draft plan conditions. Um, in speaking with with uh Deputy C O Schertz, who who was uh uh the head of the planning department for many years. This is a change neither he or I ever would have compliment uh contemplated five years ago. It's just that the change in the provincial planning system and the need to get things done quicker. Has made it such that we saw this is one area that if County Council saw fit, we could investigate changing. Um, because in many cases, these subdivisions are very um. Local matters in nature, um, and and they where they've already been vetted through municipal councils and and receive support. Uh, then then this is an area where council could consider delegating. Uh, this isn't without precedent. Uh, there's already certain planning decisions that are delegated to staff, including. The approval of a local official plan amendment was which has already gone through your municipal council. Or things like draft plan extensions up to three years where there's municipal support. Um, so if council saw fit, we would uh uh attach appropriate conditions to this to suggest that. Um, this would only be delegated to staff where there is municipal support. Um, where there wasn't municipal support or or staff are recommending uh major changes to either the draft plan of uh subdivision. Or the draft plan conditions, then the approval authority would would again rest with the county committee of the whole as it does today. Uh, with respect to some of the other changes, um, there was a report P D R C W seventeen dash twenty three. Uh, which dealt with our public meeting processes. Uh, County Council has already endorsed that report last year. And and we shared it with member municipalities to recommend that your own municipal tables. Uh, consider adopting a policy as to whether or not um public meetings are still needed for plans of subdivision and plans of condominium. And again, this this stemmed out of some of the legislative changes, which no longer require that. Um, but immediately following those legislative changes, we had developers asking us, are you or are you not going to require a meeting? And so rather than than staff having to make the call on the fly, uh, we thought it most pertinent to to uh. Get an opinion from County Council, uh, but also consider having uh your your own municipal opinions in that regard through your municipal councils. Uh, based on the fact that the county has delegated the hosting of public meetings for subdivisions and condominiums uh to municipal councils in that regard. And finally, um, as a um, as a a companion piece uh to that public meeting piece. As part of that that same report, we talked about further education on both the development process and public meetings in general. And this is something that's still very much on county staff's work plan. Uh, we've met with municipal planners. Uh, Tara was nice enough to give us an audience with the municipal clerks last year uh to talk about some training. Um, some further education that could be done to county staff, county council, municipal staff, municipal councils. Um, but also some further outreach to the public uh to help explain to them the development process. Uh, where comments are needed, where comments might not necessarily be needed, the types of comments, the types of feedback that's useful for council to hear. Uh, and and uh general decorum and and rules, so to speak, with respect to public meetings. Uh, certainly across the county and more so outside of our boundaries. Um, we've seen some some downright horrific examples of of meetings gone wrong and 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 meetings where there was actually. Uh, physical public safety risks at the meeting. Uh, so we want to do our part to try to educate and inform. Uh, while also streamline streamlining this process as much as possible and 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 certainly, you know. We're not complete dreamers to suggest that that every meeting is going to be smooth after this. Um, but we think there's there's further. Um, education roles that we can put out there, both to the 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 public development community and staff and council to to uh help this process along. So with that, we'll move into some of the suggestions that we would consider um. Uh, talking about further with your municipal staff and it might be something that you talk about with um. Respect to your own uh municipal ta municipal council tables in that regard. Um, when Bill one oh nine was passed by the province, one of the main things that Bill one oh nine did. Um, was it 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 tightened up the timeframes in the Planning Act uh in in which municipalities had uh to make decisions within. And more specifically for zoning amendments and site plan, which are both municipal decisions. Um, there were very set timeframes in which you have to make a decision. And if you don't make a decision within those timeframes, uh, then you need to start refunding fees to to uh the developer. Uh, that sent shockwaves um through the planning community. Um, because it became a matter of, okay, how do we get this done during this time? Uh, and how do we budget if we don't know if we're going to be able to meet these performance standards? And and planners across the province, not just in Gray, uh, got very, very creative uh in that sense in in looking for solutions that could. A, help be more efficient and and B, arguably, um, maybe get around the legislation in certain ways. And 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 certainly our legal services staff and and uh legal advice that's come to the Ontario Provincial Planners Institute. Has said that it's it's certainly not the planner's role to to find ways to navigate around the legislation. And in fact, that's downright dangerous. Um, but what some municipalities were looking at doing um was front ending the development process such that that pre-submission consultation phase. Uh, was far more extensive. Uh, so you've had, you'd have more of those discussions with developers and and builders and landowners. Uh, prior to ever receiving an application uh that goes public or or goes to your municipal council tables in that regard. And we think there's certainly a role for uh refining the pre-submission consultation processes. Uh, there's bylaws in place at minute at the municipal level, the county level, as well as your own municipal official plan policies that could be fine tuned in that regard. Um, but the caution that we want to put out there is um, this cannot um replace or duplicate the application process. Uh, so there were some municipalities across the province that were contemplating adding in mandatory peer reviews at the pre-submission consultation level. And and in staff's opinion, the pre-submission consultation uh process is there to provide feedback. Um, to provide the requirements to the development community on what's going to need to be addressed. To share any municipal standards, whether that be zoning standards or for plan policies, engineering standards. Um, but it's not meant to be sort of that full review before the application's ever submitted. Um, so we think there's lots of great best practices out there that some of our municipalities are already doing. Um, some of them operate development review committees uh such that if someone's knocking on your door, saying, I'd like to build a a subdivision or a new commercial development here. Um, they can get an opinion from from uh planning staff, from other departmental staff, and in some cases. Uh, limited agency staff like uh conservation authorities or or the ministry of transportation. Um, so we think that level of sort of cursory overview and feedback is the appropriate level there. And certainly, if a developer asks for a peer review prior to an application submission, it can be done. Um, but the caution would be that it it shouldn't be a a mandatory process at that time. Um, because that could be perceived to be, um, you know, navigating around the bill one oh nine timeframes and 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 that wasn't the intent in that regard. Um, so we think there's there's room to to work with municipal staff and and work with our own county team. Uh, to streamline these pre-submission consultation processes uh such that they're useful to municipalities, the county and developers. Um, but they're but they're not having a negative effect with respect to greater efficiencies and and the legislative goals in that regard. Um, with respect to those pre-submission consultation processes, no doubt, um, they are becoming more extensive and and municipalities need to look at their own. Uh, fees and services charges in that regard. In some cases, um, municipalities have already raised their fees for those processes. In other cases, it might be something you want to uh to look at in that regard. What county staff are recommending is by formalizing a fee structure in there and formalizing that process, say through a development review committee. Um, you can allow for that efficient processing embedding of development proposals. Uh, while still keeping things moving through the the pipeline in that regard. Um, with respect to the fees, um, some of the best practices would indicate maybe you have a stratified fee in that regard. Uh, some so somebody, you know, uh, phones your municipal office and says, hey, I'd like to look at buying this property. I want to understand what the zoning would allow me to do. And not do, then maybe that's a a a lower. Then maybe that's a a lower charge versus if someone comes in and and wants to build a plan of subdivision and has a a series of technical experts and and discussions with with staff. Then maybe that's a higher charge in that regard. One of the other things that came out of that Bill one oh nine process is municipalities looking at approaches with respect to how they process applications. And whether or not certain applications could be processed concurrently or whether or not they should be processed asynchronous asynchronously. So just to give an example here, if you had a situation, we'll say in the township of Southgate, where somebody was coming in to apply for a plan of subdivision application. And a zoning bylaw amendment, of course, that plan of subdivision comes to the county and that zoning amendment goes to to the township of Southgate. And and prior to Bill one oh nine, our approach at at county and municipal levels would have said. You know, the developer would apply to both the township and the county at the same time. We would process those those applications concurrently. We would have one public meeting likely in the township of Southgate where the public could come, they could speak to the subdivision, they could speak to the zoning, they could ask questions. And and then the decisions should hopefully follow shortly thereafter by both the township and the county. The concern amongst municipal staff here is that. The plan of subdivision application isn't subject to those fee refunds, whereas the zoning bylaw amendment is is subject to those fee refunds after ninety days. And and as you know, I think from from your municipal tables, subdivisions tend to take a little longer than, say, a standard zoning amendment. So if you were processing them concurrently and the subdivision started to drag on and you weren't ready for a decision on the zoning yet, you might be in a situation. Where the municipality is is having to refund all or a part of those zoning fees. So I I I speak about this from a position of privilege because it's not the county having to give back fees here because the province hasn't mandated that. We give back fees on subdivisions. But I I I want to be sympathetic to to what your own staff are facing and your own municipal budgets are facing there. That said, we still think. It makes sense to process these applications together. If you could picture a situation, we were processing them asynchronously. Let's just say a developer came in and applied for the subdivision in March and we had a public meeting in April. And then six months later, we had the decision on the public on the subdivision and and then they came in and applied for the zoning amendment. And we had almost the exact same duplicate of public meeting in December of that year. Suddenly, we're asking the public to to comment on separate applications, we're asking them to come to multiple meetings and we're having to explain ourselves in terms of. This is what we talked about last March and this is what we're talking about in September and or December or whatever my example was. And 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 we just don't see it as a good use of staff or council time. So so staff's recommendation is, except where it's it's. Legislatively or practically necessary to process them asynchronously, i.e. where you need one decision first and say a registration before you can move on with the next one. We are still invest, we are still recommending that we try to pro- process these applications concurrently. The other challenge, which I don't know that it's come up yet in Gray, is if you had that situation where. We had the subdivision and the zoning amendment and your municipal, your municipal staff refused to process the zoning amendment until the subdivision was done. We think there could be a a challenge there because we're not aware of any legislative ability to to just simply not process an application. Simply put, when you get an application, you need to deem it complete or incomplete. And if you deem it incomplete, then the the developer can refer that matter to the Ontario Land Tribunal at that stage and and it could be subject to challenge. With respect to some other municipal process change suggestions. Some of the pieces of the provincial legislation further enabled delegations of municipal planning approvals to staff. And in one case is actually, in one case actually mandated it. So as of July first of last year, it was required that site plan control be be delegated to staff. But there's other things that that you could look at at your own municipal tables, including consent applications, validation, validation certificates. Temporary use bylaws, lift of holds. And and minor zoning amendments in that regard, where maybe under certain criteria, it would be appropriate to delegate to staff. Based on the fact that you already have detailed policies again in your municipal official plan and and zoning bylaws. So you've already set the parameters under which both staff and and the development community will will play within, so to speak. And and this might speed up some of those decisions and 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 make it slightly more efficient. And also maybe reduce some of the burden on on your own council and committees who already have full plates in in terms of agendas in that regard. This next one, I think, is is maybe one of the ones I'd I'd like to underline the greatest. And and that's, there needs to be collaboration and planning work done between sort of the 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 land use planners. And and the planning departments and our own municipal public works and operations and asset management plans. What we're noticing more and more, both within Gray and outside of Gray. Is that we're running into infrastructure challenges and and largely in some of the most big ticket infrastructure challenges that communities are running into. Is the lack of available water treatment or wastewater treatment capacities. And, you know, simply put, we can have the most efficient planning processes in the world. But if you don't have pipes for people to connect to and treatment capacity for for the treatment of of those facilities. Then then you're no further ahead because you might have your planning approvals, but but you can't actually build in that regard. So we think there's further room, both at the municipal level with municipal infrastructure and and maybe with some some county collaboration here. To 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 look at this matter further. We are seeing some of our member municipalities get fairly tight on on some of their servicing capacities in that regard. In some cases, they already have capital plans and they've been collecting development charges to pay for those infrastructure upgrades. Or they're already partway through an environmental assessment process to look at those upgrades. But we just feel that with how busy everybody is and how tight municipal budgets are. This might be a a topic we need to discuss further collectively at the county and municipal tables. To ensure that we have that infrastructure capacity available to meet our housing targets and and our growth targets in that regard. So I I I flag it here as something we need to look further into. But I suspect it'll be a topic that we're discussing many more times at at this table and your own municipal table there. And I'd like to say that, you know, county staff are are here to assist. We're fully cognizant that it's not that the county that owns and operates this infrastructure. But if 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 there's planning processes that can assist with with some of those future capital plans. Or helping understand what's coming down the pipe in terms of projected development, then we're happy to to help in any way possible. And and finally, you know, I don't think it's any surprise that at at both the municipal and county tables. Recruitment is becoming more and more difficult. And I say this both from a planning perspective. But also if we're thinking about the engineers and the operations staff and 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 various other staff. In some cases, municipalities are advertising and and not getting any applicants. And and so we think maybe there's some room for for further partnership here to to help with that recruitment. And also to to hopefully minimize costs and 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 development processing disruptions in that regard. So in some cases, that might look like a model that the county undertook with the planning ecology. Rather than all nine member municipalities having to go out and 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 source their own consultant or staff or or an ecologist. It was agreed that the county would take that on at county level and provide that service. In other cases, it might be shared services between municipalities. Maybe we've got two municipalities that that can't quite justify a full-time planning position or a full-time engineer. That could split one. Maybe there's a role whereby you could have joint staff in that regard to to help fill the role of multiple municipalities. Or maybe there's a role where where the county and a municipality are are sharing a staff member or staff members plural in that regard. We know that at the municipal table, some of you have looked to bring on consultants. To process some of your planning applications or to cover other other roles in that regard. And we do think that's a that's a a good interim solution. But in some cases, that can get quite costly. And and it might be something that you need to reassess every now and then to determine whether or not it's still working in in the manner in which you. Hoped it would work in a cost efficient way or whether or not it's time to look at internal staff resources in that regard. And I recognize this is very tough to say as as we've just gone through a very difficult budget process at the county. And a number of you are all in difficult budget discussions at at your municipal tables. But we just see with with the shortage of talent out there. We're going to need to be more collaborative and and potentially more creative in our hiring solutions in that in that regard. And and that's where the county wants to encourage collaboration, both between municipalities, but also between municipalities and the county in this regard. And so that with respect, with respect to some next steps and future considerations. Should council support the recommendations here today, staff would move to implement some of those operational changes. We would come back to you with with some of those changes that might require further council approvals, such as potentially a change to the delegation of duties bylaw. And then we would, of course, share again the report with your municipal teams and and consult with municipalities with respect to. Any operational changes or or changes being looked at at the municipal level. We're also cognizant that this is a first step and 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 certainly there's always room for improvement. And and there's always room for for further look at at efficiencies in that regard at both the county and municipal table. So we certainly want to continue to investigate this, we want to continue to work with your municipal teams to look at that further. One area that if if municipal and county council saw fit that we could look at further is is our broader service delivery model. We've we've had a a quick chat with some of our neighboring counties and some of the counties further field to to understand. How their planning departments work in a two-tier municipal government. And there are a variety of 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 options out there from from a Bruce County type model where all the planners are at the county level. To to other models similar to Gray's where we have planners at the municipal and county level. To hybrid where where maybe only some municipalities have planners and others are down at the county. So if there was a desire to further look into this, that would be a bigger task, it might be something that we'd even consider. Looking at bringing consultant in to to give us a fresh set of eyes from outside the system. But the 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 key point here is is that, you know. This doesn't stop with the efficiencies outlined in this report and and we'd like to further consider greater efficiencies in that regard. And so finally, the recommendation on this one is that the report be received, that we be directed as staff to to. Proceed with the county planning efficiency recommendations outlined in this report, that we continue to engage in discussions with member municipalities. And that we continue to engage. As well with agencies and the development community to look at further room for improvement to to county and municipal processes in that regard. So that was a bit of a mouthful, but certainly happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Scott. A very comprehensive report as usual. And before I go to questions, I would just like to identify Emily and welcome her to our council chambers this morning. You could not find a better qualified planner, I'm thinking in the province than Scott to to shadow. So certainly welcome to Gray County. Now, are there any questions regarding the report? Counselor Mattresshoffs.
Thank you. Through you, Warden Milne, I. I don't know that I'm going to frame this in in the form of question. I've been eagerly anticipating this coming to to council for discussion because I'm aware of the staff to staff discussions have been going on in all of our municipalities. And anytime that we can bring efficiency by doing collaboration on on a nine municipality scale is is music to my ears. So so I would really like to be able to, I'm very highly supportive of the recommendations to bring that back to our municipalities. So we can have those kind of dialogues. I think perhaps I'll form this in the form of a question through the warden to Mr. Taylor. One of the 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 concerns or considerations that that we could anticipate in our member municipalities is. Well, this sounds like we're losing control on what our town is going to look like. So is it my understanding that this kind of anticipated staff collaboration as as well as all the other efficiencies? But focusing in on the last slide about creating staff efficiencies. Is it my understa, do I have my understanding correct that the official plans of each municipality would still remain intact? If there was collaboration in staffing here at the upper tier level that was now responsible for things that used to be a lower tier responsibility. That they would go through the checks and balances. So there'd be, there'd be the non-negotiables that all nine municipalities have to follow. Go through that checklist and then you'd open up the Town of Blue Mountains official plan and say, okay, now the the things that could be different from municipalities from municipality. What is their plan? Okay, it needs to match this and and that's how we proceed in this particular municipality. Do I have my understanding correct?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for your your, both your comments and your question, Counselor Mattresshoffs. I'll I'll try to take a stab at that one. With respect to, and 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 some of those are. You know, large what ifs and eventualities, you know, some of this this collaboration that we've highlighted within this report. Wouldn't necessarily require any changes to official plans. But if we got into discussing different service delivery models. We could, we could look at at the official plan at both the county and municipal levels to see what's appropriate in that regard. In a lot of cases, i- in terms of other models, we've seen. There is still a county or regional official plan as well as municipal official plans. And especially given, you know, sort of how distinct our communities are, I think there is still that room for those those. Municipal specific policies to really shape your communities. But if we were truly looking to minimize any potential duplication. Maybe, maybe, maybe if we were looking at the county official plan and our member municipal official plans, we would look look at a model whereby. The county sets the broad overall policies and we set more detailed policies for our rural and agricultural areas. But largely speaking, the county plan stays out of our our designated settlement areas. And and then your municipal official plans would do the converse essentially. You would set those detailed policies for your growth areas, your settlement areas. And and largely speaking, in the rural and agricultural policies defer to the county plan in that regard. And and there are a few municipalities in Gray, including Georgian Bluffs and West Gray, that have already already largely adopted that model. So for example, the West Gray official plan focuses its policy efforts on Durham and Newstadt, West Gray's two fully serviced communities. And and defers to the county for for those rural and agricultural areas. So I think if we were going to explore those those future collaborative efforts, there's definitely still room. For community-specific policies and 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 that community autonomy in that regard. But I think there's further room for for investigation to see, okay, listen. Where can, where can we all agree and say, maybe in in agricultural areas where the even the provincial policy statement is already so restrictive? Do we need to set some policies there? And and then this discussion gets further complicated in six of our nine municipalities. Where we also have the Niagara Scarpment Commission and and I don't want to speak in any way ill of the Niagara Scarpment Commission. But if we look at those layers of planning policy at the municipal level, the county level, the NEC level. Then there's just that that greater need for collaboration and 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 in some cases. Reducing duplicative policy efforts, if if that makes sense.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you for the the support. I guess you're talking about collaboration. One of the example is, and I guess this is sort of second part to my question is. Natural heritage, which was at the Conservation Authority, which is taken away, but obviously we had a process that we were moving forward, but we're sort of. In that pause mode. On, we're going to hire a staff person to do that, correct? I guess that's, and where is that? Remember the the certain reporting to the Conservation Authority, I thought it was a natural heritage was taken away from the Conservation Authority. And we were looking at doing it as a blanket for all the municipalities and there was a fee charge. Which is probably an example of what you're saying. But I guess through that, where is that at? Because we haven't, we haven't had the from the province yet. Or have we? I I I'm a little, I'm falling up on that part.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, thank you for your question, Counselor McQueen. So in in this case, those changes to to reduce the Conservation Authority's role in the natural environment took effect January first of twenty twenty-three. We brought those reports to county council, county council was supportive and and we have hired those two planning ecologists. So tho- those two individuals were both hired in twenty twenty-three and they have been providing ecology services to both the county and member municipalities. Since then, so that was probably third quarter of last year that that would have kicked in. And then the fees and services bylaw update that was that was passed by council this morning. Implemented fees for those ecology services such that those fees aren't coming on the on the back of the general levy. But largely going to be funded by by developers and and applicants for planning applications. So that process is still in its infancy. We do hope to have our two planning ecologists come and present before council. Introduce them to council and 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 explain or or talk to council about what they do. And and how they can assist your municipal staff further and and how they can continue to assist county programs in that regard. We are meeting very regularly with your municipal planning staff. As part of that ecology process, because, you know, when you start up a brand new service. You know, it's never perfect on day one, so there's adjustments being made, there's constant conversations and and questions coming in. That that were in in very close communication with your municipal teams on.
Thank you, Scott. Go ahead, Counselor McQueen.
Just just a fault, I apologize. I thought through, was it Bill twenty-three? I thought something was put on pause. On that part of where that was going to fall. Now, did it get rectified from the province? Because I know we had taken a pause on hiring because we weren't sure what was happening in the province. So was there a clarification moving forward? Because I was still in my mind that that hadn't got clarified.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. You are, you are very correct, Counselor McQueen. We took the initial staff report early last year and and sought council's support for hiring. One planning ecologist to serve the county needs at that time. And the idea was we would go back and consult with municipalities on whether or not we needed to hire the second. We went back and consulted with all nine member municipalities and they said, yep, go ahead and hire the second. We went back and consulted with all nine member municipalities, and they said, yep, go ahead and hire the second. We were just about to bring that second report back to county council to say, yep, we talked to everybody, they all want a second. Can we have permission to hire a second? And then the draft 2023 provincial planning statement came out. And in that April 2023 draft, it simply had a giant blank for natural heritage. And there were no natural heritage policies at that time. So at that point, county staff hit the pause button because we didn't know where the province was going. Later on, the province released a further draft of the provincial policy statement that had those natural heritage, natural environment policies in them, and they very closely mimicked what was in the 2020 PPS. So at that point, we had that further discussion with council and proceeded with hiring the second planning ecologist at that point. But sorry for the confusion in that regard. I missed that in the first part of your question, but you're right. There was that interim pause and uncertain period. But based on the further draft, PPS staff felt confident that that would appropriately rest with municipalities in the county in that regard.
So following that, the draft PPS is to be finalized when? Or no, maybe you don't have that crystal ball. I just, if they revised it, I know I was at a training session last fall, and they were talking, and at that time, it was like it was still on the older roll, sort of in between. They weren't sure. So can you give me some timelines on? Because I think that provincial policy statement is very important, especially when it's finalized as well.
Scott?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor McQueen. I wish I had some timeframes there. We've asked provincial ministry staff on a number of occasions, and they couldn't give us any definite timeframes. There was some speculation in the planning community that it might come in spring of 2024, but that was pure speculation. And particularly with that provincial announcement on December 13th, where they announced that they're going back and consulting on a number of processes that were already amended through previous pieces of legislation. I'm not sure what that does to their draft of the PPS in that regard and whether or not that's going to be expedited or pushed back in favor of some of those legislation and regulation changes. So we'll certainly keep county council in the loop as soon as we hear anything. But right now, we have no timeframe for when that's coming, unfortunately.
Digger Harrison would say, any day now. Any other discussion? Counselor Boddy, and I see Counselor DeBreen with their hand up next.
Sorry, Warden, just a quick comment, not really a question. I couldn't help, but as I listened to that report talking about finding big efficiencies, really what it suggested is we need to have a discussion about municipal restructuring. You know, this is just planning, but it really gets to the same thing as how can we be more efficient? And that's one of the things that we need to have the discussion on.
Yeah, and lunch is here, so that's, that'll be discussion at lunch. Or the strategic plan. Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you, Warden Milne. And to the question about when are we, can we expect the provincial policy statement to be released? I just want to echo Mr. Taylor's comment. AMO board met with Minister Calandra last January 25th. And pretty much what Mr. Taylor said is like, any day now, imminently. So we're not really sure, but we're going to hold him to that, any day now.
Thank you. Counselor Apples.
So through you, Mr. Warden, to Mr. DeBreen. Are you saying that the policy and the statement is going to be delivered by a Ford that only has a reverse gear in it?
Okay, we're moving right along. Counselor Greg.
Thank you, Warden Milne. And I'd just like to ask if a staffer, in the report, there is no financial implications. But certainly, the direction from the province, from the federal government, is build more housing. And there's concern with the cost of housing. And I think it would be, I should ask, is there anything here in the planning efficiencies within this report that can align with attempts at trying to contribute to mitigate the escalation of the cost of housing? Because certainly, it's irrefutable. It's been provided in many various documents and different literature that it's not insignificant, the cost of government fees and studies, and et cetera, et cetera. Are you able to comment on any alignment here, which would contribute to trying to not pass along further fees? Because ultimately, every fee that we put in place does go to the expense part of building the home and is passed on to the home builder.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for that question, Counselor Greg. So county staff did a series of consultations with the development community in 2022. And to find out where the pinch points were, what was driving some of those costs? And of course, 2022, we were still very much in a pandemic or nearing the end of the pandemic phase. There were supply chain issues and various other things. But what we heard over and over was developers would be willing to pay more in the form of application fees or municipal charges if they knew that they were going to get a decision more quickly, and if they knew that there was going to be a finite and certain planning and municipal approvals process in that regard. We heard a story from one developer who develops both within Gray and outside of Gray. And he told a story that he had a situation in one municipality outside of Gray, where he was proposing a large development. It didn't quite make it on one council agenda, had to wait another month, and that extra month cost him a million bucks. And that wasn't anything to do with the municipal charges or application fees or studies. That was simply based on the capacity of that municipality to be able to process that application from staff and get it before council in a timely fashion. So then if we link that back to some of the proposed changes in this report, we'll take, for example, the delegation, the potential delegation of approval of subdivisions and condominiums for those municipalities outside of the city of Owen Sound, who currently already approved their own, to staff. If we think about a subdivision application, let's just say, in the municipality of Meaford, it goes to the municipality of Meaford's planning committee or council or committee at the whole. And then a subsequent report is needed at county council. And let's just say municipality of Meaford staff need three weeks of lead time to get it on that municipal agenda. And then county staff need another two or three weeks of lead time to get it on our county agenda. You know, suddenly, we're looking at, you know, four to six weeks for an approval. Whereas if we had a situation where you still had that municipal vetting, and it went through municipal council in that regard. Sorry. If you have that situation where it's already going through municipal council, and should municipal council support it? It can be approved by staff without the need for a further staff report to county council, vetting through, you know, the clerks and all the processes that go into putting an agenda package out roughly a week before the meeting. Then we could save, in some cases, a few weeks to even close to a month, just with that process alone. So that's just one example of where we think that if we can fine-tune our processes, if we can fine-tune those pre-submission consultation processes, hopefully, that gives developers a little bit more certainty with respect to the application process they're going through and the approvals process they're going through. It won't work in all cases. There's always going to be those complex files that take longer than staff would like. But we do think for a large number of files, this could help be part of the solution. And so if you think about those delegations at your municipal tables too, again, things like a lift of hold or a temporary use bylaw, maybe your municipal council might feel you have appropriate safeguards in place through the policies in your official plan and zoning, that that's something that's appropriate to delegate to staff on a conditional basis.
Thank you, Scott. It's a good question. Okay, I think we are ready for the call or for the vote. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. That brings us to the consent item that was pulled, 6B. Counselor Nielsen, are you prepared to move the reception of that item? Or do you wish to do something different? Yes? Okay, is there a seconder? Counselor Mattresshoffs, thank you. You want to speak to it, Counselor Nielsen?
Thank you, Warden Milne. I was just wondering if staff could provide an update as to what's happening there. There's been some questions and concerns from community members. I'm just looking for kind of a staff update response to the letter.
Yeah, I believe Randy is ready to speak to that, please.
Great, thank you for that question and through you, Mr. Warden. So this correspondence expresses concerns about a potential parking area that staff were exploring as part of the Gray Road 30 road improvement project scheduled for this year. The correspondence provides some suggestions and recommendations on what should be considered when exploring future parking solutions and raises a number of really good points, actually. We've received similar correspondence expressing concerns about the location of the potential parking area at Gray Road 13 and 30. And this was mentioned briefly as part of the delegation by Dr. Martha Rogers at the last community hold meeting that council maybe may recall. So staff were considering this potential parking area as part of the overall Gray Road 30 road improvement project. And it was to help to address some of the parking issues that are being experienced in this area. There's a number of trail users and visitors that visit the Kimberley Forest area as well as the Bruce Trail and Old Baldy. That's all located in close proximity to this intersection. Those properties are primarily owned by the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry, as well as Gray Saville. The trailhead study also identified a need for more parking in around this area, just as cars frequently park along the sides of the roads, which creates a safety concern. And planning and economic development, tourism and culture staff will be bringing forward a report around the trailhead study in the near future, just to give council an update about that overall study. Given the concerns expressed by the community regarding this proposed parking area and just given limited staff resources and project funds for the Gray Road 30 project, we're proposing to not pursue that potential parking area at 13 and 30 as part of the Gray Road 30 project at least. We will be exploring installing paved shoulders as part of that Gray Road 30 project. We think that this will provide an opportunity not only to assist active transportation with cyclists in the area, but also provide a safer route opportunity for people to walk along the sides of the road to get to the various trailheads in the area. There will likely be some excess fill as part of the Gray Road 30 project, so we could look at locating some of that excess fill at that corner. We own that property, and that's why we looked at that corner as a potential parking area. So if someone wanted to pursue a parking area lot in the future, then it could be ready to go if we were to relocate some of that fill at that location. Transportation services staff are planning some consultation on the overall Gray Road 30 project. It could happen this spring if the project continues to stay on track. And in the meantime, what staff are proposing to do is just provide a response to Mr. French and further response to Dr. Rogers, just to provide them with an update to let them know that at this time, we're, staff are proposing not to pursue that parking lot as part of the overall Gray Road 30 project at this time. What we will be doing, though, is we have the outdoor management group that's been set up. We'll continue to explore parking options for not just this area, but also other areas. Should the landlords of those forest and trail organizations want to pursue parking options in the future? So that's something that they can pursue. In this case, like I said, it's the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry and Conservation Authority that own the properties in this area. So that might be something that they want to consider pursuing as a parking lot options or options in this area with the community. So happy to take any questions that council may have.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Dan, you're good? Counselor McQueen?
So further to the current situation there, there is a ramp that sort of helps get you up the hill instead of stopping. Is that still being in the design to continue that ramp? Or I was sort of wondering if that ramp was going to be removed because you're creating the parking lot. But if the parking lot is put on hold, will that ramp still be included in the new design? Because I have had conversations where we're, because you're heading up a hill, stopping and go, it does give you that momentum to get up the hill. So I just sort of follow up with that in short.
Okay, Pat, do you want to speak to that, please?
Yeah, we are planning on removing that ramp as part of the project. We talked to our maintenance guys, operations guys. It's kind of difficult to maintain. We have a lot of intersections that don't have a ramp. We've removed a few over the years. MTO does that as well. They're kind of not quite as popular as they used to be. So we're planning on removing that as part of the project.
Thanks, Pat. Any other questions? Counselor McQueen?
I think there's going to be some disappointment there, just for the simple fact is it does give you that run-up. I understand that there's reasons, but it just, it does give you that momentum to get up there, especially if you're in a truck or propane truck or gravel truck or whatever. I don't, it just, you emerge on there. But you talk about climate change, you talk about a lot of things, stops, starts, use up a lot, and then momentum that's going. So anyway, we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this one? Call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. We have no closed meeting matters. Are there any other business that can properly come before this meeting? Counselor Apples?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you. And I'm, I'll approach it at this. I had the privilege last year at the AMO conference of getting appointed to TAPMOL. Top agri-producing municipalities of Ontario have been doing a considerable amount. A number of lower-tier municipalities here are a member of TAPMOL. Became aware the other day that Gray County is not. And I was trying to get something forward, a report on to our next council meeting, suggesting that Gray County does join this very important lobbying group and working group for to be a member. And I'm not sure whether it's through this or through a notice of motion that I bring it through here. So that's what I'm looking for from Tara and our staff. What would be the best approach?
I'm getting some indication here that a notice of motion would be probably the best, most appropriate route. So just hold that thought. Any other business? Counselor Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just to follow up on Counselor Echols' comments, I certainly, you know, agree that TAPMOL is providing a lot of valuable information and advocacy for any municipalities that have aggregate within their boundaries. I was under the impression Gray County was a member at one time. At least we had representation at a county level, if my memory serves me correctly. And so maybe if part of, if the motion is brought forward, part of that could be looking into whether or not we ever had any membership. Because I did believe at one point we were members, so thanks.
So I would think any notice of motion would look for a report determining those questions, those points. Okay, so no further other business? Counselor McQueen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a follow-up from some comments that our staff has raised and maybe other municipalities. Is there a conversation going on about waste through the staff? Just sort of fill us in, because I know myself and the deputy mayor are a little, a little bit curious of to what extent or what's happening. So thank you.
I'll ask Kim to comment on that. Kim?
As you know, the CAOs meet generally monthly. And one of the questions that had come forward in our conversations was any follow-up to the original resolution that county council had passed, looking for municipal modernization funding around waste management. And what we decided as a group was that, at a minimum, it was worthwhile to continue on with some analysis and then some investigation, just at a staff level, that we could then bring forward to this table as well as your own with regard to the statuses of a number of aspects of solid waste management, et cetera. So there is waste management community of practice being set up. Randy has started that, started that work when I was away. And I think the first meeting is coming up very shortly. We'll be putting together a terms of reference and some analysis has already started through the work of the Climate Change Action Plan. So we'll get some work done, and then I think we'll be, we'll bring that back to here and update you and get some further direction. Okay?
Very good, thank you. Okay, Counselor Apples, notice of motion?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you. I'd be putting forward a notice of motion coming forward to county council. county council on renewing, apparently was the new information I have, of renewing our membership and or making sure that we have a membership with TAPMOL. The Gray County takes a membership there and staff report coming forward at the next meeting with that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other notice of motion? Not seeing any? I have one motion remaining. Counselor Nielsen, seconded by Counselor Hotches. All in favor? To adjourn, that is. We're adjourned. Lunch is here, has been for a little while, so if it was hot, it's warm.